Okay, good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty here on Tuesday, January twenty eighth. It's time to call the meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. And the first item of business is to approve the agenda. And before we do that, I would like to remove from consent the approval to accept donation funds portion of the consent.
Move to approve with changes and additions?
Second.
Okay, and so we do have an addition, we have two, we do have two additions, and we do have one postponement that I forgot to mention, that number nine thirty-five item will not be discussed today. That will be moved to another date. So with that, I think I'm right away just gonna just briefly mention, looking through this, and I see that there were three donations made, and I just think rather than us just simply recording and filing that they did it and accepting them, that the public should know that there's people out there that are doing good things. The first one was two hundred dollars was received to veterans programs from the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Program. That was pretty nice to see that happen. Beyond the Yellow Ribbon really helps a lot with veteran issues. And the next one was a two hundred dollar gift to the Clay County Work Detail Program from Saint John's Church in Georgetown. So thank them for doing that. And one hundred dollars from Oakbound Cemetery to Clay County Work Detail Program. So those are, those are nice things for those people to do to help with these services. Just wanted to make, mention that.
We didn't motion it.
Okay, so we need to, is that a motion to approve?
Yeah, we had already done the motion and second for the.
Yeah, but, yeah, but we pulled that from consent, so that needs a separate motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Okay, back to our agenda. Citizens to be heard, it looks like we have none here this morning. Approval of payment and bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same motion carried. Approval of minutes from January seventh, fourteen, and twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, we're gonna move right through this. I want to take a minute and call up Kirk here to come and say hello. As you know, here we went through a process of hiring a new solid waste manager, and we're really pleased to introduce Kirk Rosenberg to everyone and to the community. And it's nice to have you here, and you're, was it yesterday was your first day?
Yesterday was my first day, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, welcome.
You're still here, that's a good sign.
Well, you had, certainly had a warm welcome for me weather-wise, so got the blood flowing right away.
Well, why don't you, why don't you just spend a couple minutes and tell people about yourself here?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Kirk Rosenberg. Originally, I'm from Iowa, so don't hold that against me. As they say in Iowa, Iowa means, Iowa holds apologies, so there you are. Went to school at University of Montana, Missoula, Montana. Worked in Glacier Park for three summers. I worked for the Forest Service for five years, and I was a hot shot. I was also a smoke jumper as well, so I had a lot of wildlife, or wildfire experience. I've worked for the State of Minnesota PCA and the Waste Management Board, OEA, Office of Environmental Assistance, for about twenty-five years. Worked with a lot of counties primarily, I traveled throughout the state. Worked with Clay County, interestingly enough, about twenty-five, thirty years ago, on a perm project, which is back now again. And so I'm very familiar with a lot of the county and also the other projects they've worked on in the past. I'm looking forward to meeting each and every one of you. I'll come out and talk to you on an individual basis to learn what your concerns may be, any issues you might have. I can't do this job by myself, obviously, so I'm gonna need all your help and all the input I can get from you, and obviously from the community as well. So with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Well, I just want to comment, you know, and I was one of the ones who was fortunate to go through the interview process with you, and I learned a little bit more about you, and, and I kind of look forward to you helping work with us to help with this project that we're going on jointly with our neighbors to the east. I think that, that's a pretty significant step for, for solid waste for now. I know you have, you have greater dreams and aspirations for us down the road, but...
And I think together we can do it, I really do. I have the fullest confidence that we can get there, so, but again, I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Okay, well, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're right on time. Next, we have our public hearing for a tax abatement request from Alderaan Industries, and we're gonna turn this over to our planning and environmental programs director, Tim Magnusson. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing, so if you want to open.
I'm moving to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is open. Okay.
All right. As you mentioned, this public hearing is a hearing for a tax abatement request from Alderaan Industries or Alderaan Holdings LLC. Alderaan Industries is a company in Clay County that started out back in two thousand or so. They make electrical floats and switches and control panels for the water and wastewater industry. They've been out of Holly, they've been in a number of places in Holly, and as they keep growing, they've had to move into larger spaces. As they've expanded, within the last year or so, they constructed a substantial plant facility just west of the city of Holly in, it's actually west of Glori Land subdivision also. Anyway, as part of that expansion, they have made a request for tax abatement. The request, as it came from, from Alderaan, was for a ten-year abatement at a hundred percent of county taxes. The two documents that I laid in front of you, the one that has the color on it, that's the valuation as calculated by our county assessor. So of their tax liability, approximately nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars is the county portion of that. So if you take that, that number, and that's only on improvements on the property, not on the land itself. So if you take that number over ten years, you're looking at about a hundred and ninety-one, a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. The Business Subsidy Committee met after the county board meeting last week, and we talked about the application. It does score very high in our scoring evaluation sheet. In fact, it scored higher than our previous applicant. So we discussed it. I've come to believe that the county thinks that ten years is too long for an abatement period, so we talked about a number, a number of scenarios at, at the five-year level. Earlier, we had approved an abatement, that was a five-year abatement that started at a hundred percent and went down twenty percent per year for each year of five years. The scenarios that you have listed in front of you today are a couple of them that, that the subcommittee looked at, and that was the straight ten, eighty, sixty, forty, twenty, over five years. The committee also looked at a five-year abatement of a hundred, a hundred and sixty, forty, twenty. The other two are ones that I added in there, just to give you some idea as to what, what the value of an abatement at those would be. The other was one hundred, a hundred and eighty, sixty, forty, and then the other was a six-year abatement, two one-hundred percents, and then eighty, sixty, forty, twenty. So give you some kind of an idea as to the dollar figure we're talking about in the different The Alderaan representatives are here, Dan Sherping and Bob Klabundey, and that's pretty much what I've got. There was not a hard and fast recommendation that came out of the subcommittee. They did, did like scenario number three, the hundred percent for two years, then sixty, forty, twenty. But I, I don't recall that that was something that was put in stone, so that's really all I have for you, and I think you should hear from the applicant.
Sure, well, thank you, Tim. Okay, is it Dan and Bob, right?
Dan and Bob.
Dan and Bob, do you guys want to come up and talk to us and... Just make sure that when one of you are speaking, you speak right into the microphone, if you would please.
My voice doesn't sound too good today, so it won't be me.
Okay, so you got, you got a delegated spokesman, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, welcome. And, you know, we did, I served on that subsidy committee, and we, we were certainly excited with, with what you're bringing to the county, so.
Thank you.
I'm gonna start off by saying that, so. Okay.
I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time again to meet with Bob and I, and...
And Dan, Dan, just, Dan, just for the record, maybe if you could state your name to the record, because we are in a public hearing here, if you wouldn't mind doing so?
Dan Sherping, one of the owners of Alderaan Industries.
And Bob Klabundey, also co-owner of the company.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, now go ahead and proceed with your comments.
Just have this little thing to support our, to go through why we requested this. The first page is a previous presentation, is, you know, we applied for two thousand and ten before there was a program, and then the program was made. On the third page, the reasons why we think we need a tax abatement, it's not that we want one, it's, we do need one, and Alderaan Industries does not know of any competitors in Clay County that we compete with. So we do not take business away from another business. The only thing we compete for in Clay County is labor, and that's probably a good thing in most people's minds. And also on that point, I think Henry Ford, I think this is attributed to him, he said the only way you create wealth, you either farm it, mine it, or manufacture it. And, you know, we have a strong egg community up here, and we're a manufacturing company, so we do bring resources in, and we're, not to take anything away from a service company, but it's, you know, manufacturing does add, I think, a little bit more incrementally to the economy. Also, since we're a manufacturing company, we deal with people bringing goods from other, from low-cost nations, so we're not competing just with local supply and demand issues, we're competing with stuff coming in from low-cost countries, so that's hurting us. Also, Alderaan decide, we like Clay County, we love the area, and we decided to stay in Clay County even though there's other low-cost areas close by that we could have moved to, but we, you know, decide we like where we're at, and we want to add to that Page four is, I've told people this before, building a building's the easy part, it's paying for that building and providing good jobs, good pay and benefits, and that's the tough part, and making that sustainable. And that's what we're trying to do. We moved to Holly in two thousand and three with one, we had, started with one full-time employee, and we're up over forty full-time employees, so about ten years, we've grown from zero, zero basically, to forty, and we just think our growth has kind of started, because as you grow, it seems to be easier to grow. Those first few years are really tough, so we see a great future for us in Clay County. Page five, when we are looking to build a building, that's why we, we approached Clay County in two thousand and ten for a tax abate program, because we knew monies would be tight and everything that we could pull together, we would need. But we did want to hold up the building process to make sure every dot was, every I was dotted and every T was crossed. You just have to keep moving forward, and we don't have the resources to do everything on a timely manner. And, and we applied in two thousand and ten, well before we built a building, so we aren't applying after the fact, actually, we applied before the fact.
And I want to, I want to say to that, that our subsidy committee agreed with that. We, we felt that, that what you did, it certainly wasn't after the fact, you were, you were kind of ahead of the game in, in some respects, in terms of what the county board ultimately decided it wanted to do to help with economic development in Clay County. And it was through applications such as yours that kind of set the tone to accomplish that, so. So, so I think we agree entirely with what you have on page five.
Yeah, there's, I mean, it's not like we saw someone else receive, then we're coming back. On the last page, Alderaan is a growing company, and will continue to add economic value to the community, and as we grow, we'll just do more so. The second point is a tax abatement's a temporary delay in tax revenue to Clay County, and, but it has a lasting impact on Alderaan, because these next three, four years to pay for the building, we're trying to grow into the mortgage payments, so these years are critical for us. So it's a temporary delay in tax revenue, but it's a lasting impact for us, and that's how we view it. And that lasting impact will impact, you know, the number of employees we have, the pay, and the benefit structure. And the last point, we're just asking the board to view this as a request, as an investment in Clay County, not as a favor for Alderaan. It, it would, it is a favor, I mean, it's greatly appreciated if we get a tax abatement, but also, I believe, you know, there's a multiplier effect and stuff, and I think it's an investment in rural Clay County. And I just would like to just bring those points to forefront then.
Okay.
And, and it's been a while since we applied for the tax. I didn't know that we applied for, you know, ten years, you know, that's if we did, you know. I was, and that seems a little excessive to me now, and I would just like to scale that request back to a hundred percent for five years.
Okay, yeah, the, we have had a real difficult time in, in these tax abatements, and it seems like we get a lot of requests for a ten-year one, and, and that, with that, we do find a little bit more difficult to, to go through with something of that length. But, you know, certainly, we have some different options and opportunities here dealing with these five-year numbers. I know you're requesting the full hundred for, for five years. We, we went through some sort of a, we have a little scaling process that we also use to kind of guide us in terms of, you know, job creation and several factors, and then as, and then that helps us, to some degree, give a guideline on, on where we should be going with, with these abatements, but, and, you know, it's, we don't, we don't look at it as, as a gift to you either. We, we do look at this as an investment. We recognize the number, you, you said you went from one to forty employees.
Over ten years.
That's, that's pretty significant. Those forty employees, we don't know, but they might have bought houses in Clay County, and they're, they're spending their money in Clay County and supporting other businesses in Clay County. So that, that's, that's kind of our goal, and why we want to, you know, we need to be competitive with our other surrounding neighbors who are also competing to get businesses to be in our county, so. So I think, you know, what I can tell you today, in, in terms of here, I, we're gonna be glad to work with you, and, and I think ultimately, we will, we will give you some sort of a, a positive response to your request. Anybody else have comments for the hearing? Grant, any questions?
No, I, I think Commissioner Campbell covered it pretty well. I, I normally wouldn't, you know, I've been supportive of this, but based on the fact that you had submitted your application prior to, to this taking place, and I think everything just fell into place right, and I support an abatement for you. We're, we're happy you're a Clay County business, and, and I, and I, at least, I'm sure the commission wants to help you continue to be a strong viable business and, and stay here, so. So I'll, I'll support, you know, an abatement for your business. I'm not, I'm not sure which one of these just yet, but, but I do support this process and the abatement for your business.
I did take a tour of the place that Don and Bob gave me, a tour of the place, and it's an impressive place, what they do and stuff, and I think they are a great addition to Clay County, what they're doing, I mean, to show off a company like that is pretty good, and I was impressed with them.
Very good. Okay, if we have no other comments, Tim, you have anything else for the, for the hearing?
I was just looking around to see what public was here to...
Okay, yeah, there's, unless Nancy wants to comment, or Jim wants to comment.
But it's, I think you do need to request or ask if the public's got anything to say.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay, do we have any other public comments?
Jim with some comments.
Jim, do you have comments for us?
Yeah, I just want to say from the...
Maybe Jim, maybe you can introduce yourself to the public.
I'm Jim Garten, I'm the president of the Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation, and Mark Fox has kind of taken the lead on this, working with Alderaan and, and with the county. We're very supportive of this, we think it's a real positive aspect for the community, and, and we feel under the circumstances that you did, since they did apply previously, that, you know, we're always afraid of setting dangerous precedents, but, you know, we think this is a, you know, a great idea, and hopefully it can be approved.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public before we close the hearing? Any other comments? For the final call.
Move to close the hearing.
If you have a motion to close, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same. So what I'd like to tell you, Dan and Bob, is that I would, I would like to delay a vote today on, on this. As you can see, we're short two commissioners today, and one of the commissioners, it's, it's his district that your business is in, and I certainly would respect his wanting to be here to, to discuss this as well. And so if it's okay with you, we can put this on the agenda for our next meeting, and...
Is he gonna be here next meeting?
John will be back next week, won't he? Yeah, yeah, so we should be good to go next week, and hopefully we can give you an answer.
Thank you very much.
All right?
Thank you.
Nancy, good morning.
Good morning.
We have a application for cancellation of forfeiture.
We had one of our tax forfeit properties that we had gone through the process of forfeiting it, we found later to have an error in the legal description, so in order to fix that and go back and start over and get it taken care of, I need a resolution stating that you approve for us to do that.
I don't think the motion approved that.
Second.
Maybe have a motion and second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same. See how easy that was?
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. All right, it's, we're a little bit early here. We got Rhonda's coming over for her. Well, let's go ahead and get in and start this with Jim here. Jim, do you want to come up and, we're gonna hear, have a presentation from Jim Garten, the president of the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation, and it's always nice to have Jim come and tell us what's going on with our Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Group.
Well, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. We like to come in and talk to the Clay County Commissioners in January, just to kind of give you an update as to where two thousand and thirteen ended, and kind of what some of our focuses and projections are for two thousand and fourteen. And I know we were here several months ago, just as a recap, too, and we'll try to do that several times during the course of the year. But two thousand and thirteen, from an activity standpoint, was, you know, very, very successful, both events and programming and initiative-wise, as well as financially, the, the organization was within budget, and actually ended the year with a very small surplus that was added into our, I guess, ongoing financial pot, if you will. But again, want to focus on the process of some of the things that we've been doing, and, and kind of the changes that have occurred over the last couple of years. So traditionally, an economic development organization went under the model of what we call attraction and incentive. A lot of what they did was trying to bring companies into the marketplace, and then looking to communities and looking to the state and other people to help build an incentive package that would helpfully attract that. Over time, around the United States, that process has proven to be not exactly the most advantageous, and what it's found is, those companies that were attracted when there was a recession, or there was an issue that came up, the first place that they contracted from was those locations that were shuttered or closed, and several of those are, are, pretty evident even in the Greater Fargo-Moorhead area over the, over the last five or ten years. So when we came in, we, we had started talking to a lot of the businesses here, and kept hearing the same thing over and over again, we have problems with workforce, we have problems with workforce getting highly skilled, trained, whether it's on a manufacturing floor or whether it's in the, the executive suite almost of, of businesses. So we really changed the existing model that was taking place there to a thing where we call economic gardening. And basically what that is, is spending ninety percent of our time with our existing businesses, and really focusing on them and trying to make sure that they're well-growing and moving forward. Alderaan would be a perfect example of that. So when we got here in two thousand and twelve, the organization had made about forty business development calls a year. I'm proud to say that in two thousand and thirteen, that our, our group made a hundred and fifty to primary sector industries, to the president, to the CEO, the senior-most person, the plant manager. And what we're trying to do is truly understand what's going on within the marketplace. As an example of that, quickly, one of the conversations we had at the end of two thousand and twelve was with David Berg from American Crystal Sugar, you know, here in Clay County. And they had just come out with a, an incredible harvest, probably one of the biggest that they, the valley had ever seen, and at rates that were way above anything they'd, they'd seen, had been progressively going up. But right after that harvest, he said, Jim, the world glut of sugar is gonna have a major impact on us next year. And he explained some of the, the processes, and kind of tweaked our curiosity, so we did a little bit more research on what that would mean. He had an opportunity to sit down with Howard Dahl from Amity Technology and... He had an opportunity to sit down with Howard Dahl from Amity Technology in Fargo about a month after that, and Howard was nice enough to take Mark and I aside and give us a sugar 101 lesson. And he pulled out his Wall Street Journal, and he knew the acreage in the valley that was in production normally. He looked at what the rates were at that time, which were still pretty high, and he said, let's assume that it's thirty percent less, and, which is what David Berg had told us. So he did some calculations and said, that'll mean a $250 to $300 million change from the harvest of 2012 to the harvest of 2013 in revenues to the agricultural community. And that was the first downfall that that community's seen in probably ten years in an ag world. As it turned out, that thirty percent was closer to forty-five percent, so it was probably a $350 million hit that we're taking right now up and down the Red River Valley in our process. That's not the world I'm talking, this is the Red River Valley. So as we went through that with him, we said, Howard, what are you planning for 2014? He said, we're already changing, we're already cutting production back, we're seeing a world glut, so we're not going to be selling as much equipment. I said, do your suppliers know that? Well, they should. So we reached out to American Crystal Sugar, and we reached out to them and some other people, and asked who their suppliers and their subcontractors were, and reached out to all of them to make sure they understood. Some of them did, some of them didn't, and appreciated the information as to their planning for this coming year. So it was just an example. So we're looking for trends, we're looking for process, and the best way to do that and answer the needs of our existing businesses is by being out there and talking to them. So in that process, we had a very good year, and a hundred and fifty calls, and from that, we got a lot of good information. We helped a lot of companies that were in the process of either growing or trying to cut back a little bit, and that process is really what one of our main goals is, is that if we can do that and do that well, and understand where those blips are coming, it gives us and the community a better opportunity to deal with that. So we're very, very positive with that process. But even with that, we did have a very good year from an attraction standpoint. You know, we worked on twenty-nine new business development projects, and in the packet that I believe was sent to you, you know, they were outlined, and then the actual deals that had been completed were outlined and put up on some of these, the ones that were confirmed at that point to move forward. We're also currently working on several very significant projects, a couple that have refocused their attention in their predominantly major distribution facilities. They're both very interested in the Clay County area, and one very large manufacturing opportunity, but because of what it is and where it's going to have to be, it's going to have to be in the Greater Fargo area. But again, that opportunity, we're one of probably ten communities around the country that have been shortlisted for this project. It could mean up to six hundred employees, it would be an incredible opportunity manufacturing-wise for us here. But the big question is, where do we find the employees to fill those things?
You know, Jim, I just want, on that statement alone, and some, you know, sometimes we get questions, well, why does Clay County partner in this type of venture with public-private? And the interesting thing is what you just said. If we're able to bring a business here that has, brings in six hundred high-paying jobs, that gives our citizens in Clay County an equal shot at those jobs.
Yep.
You know, and I think people need to realize, that's the significant role that this public-private joint venture has done well with.
Yeah.
You know, so citizens, both sides of the river, have benefited from that.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll let you go on. I gave me the chance to, that plug in.
Yeah, but it's true. So anyway, as we go through there, so we did have a good year, even from new business development side, even though our true focus is on the, with our existing companies, but we think that direction is the right direction, that we really focus on our existing companies, making sure that they get every benefit that they can get, whether it's an incentive or a program that's being offered, jobs program, both in Minnesota and in North Dakota. We want them to take advantage of everything they can take advantage of, so they can have that money for working capital and growth, and to move the process forward. So that whole economic gardening thing, it's, you know, you talk about, oh, it's, we're nurturing, we're helping it grow, but the process, I think, is right on target, and it's something that we need to do as a community in a better way. The other thing is, we made these calls, the reoccurring thing, as I said, that we hear constantly over and over and over again, is in regards to workforce. So in 2013, we took a business development full-time employee slot that we had open, and repurposed that, and hired our second workforce development specialist to work with our businesses, to come up with programs and initiatives that will help, not only, from an education standpoint, drawing people into the community that's going to be workers, but also, how are we going to go out outside the marketplace? Because the only way we can sustain our growth is through net adds, is by bringing new people within, into the FM area. We just can't do it with the numbers that we have. So we have to come up with programs, and we are now working with the universities, and both the university and college here in Clay County have been incredible, working with us. They've supplied us with alumni records. And the reason that was interesting for us is because when I first got here, one of the first conversations I had was with Microsoft, and I said, you don't have any trouble hiring people? And Don Morton from Microsoft said, you know, not really, we're Microsoft, you know, we can't attract probably better than some people can, just because of our name. But, you know, he said, what we found is, is that we were going through a period of time where we had about a twenty-one percent revetism rate, so we were losing people about every twenty months, because they, and we couldn't figure out why. So as we went through that process, they did a very comprehensive study, and found that almost all of the people that left in that first two-year period had been attracted from warm-weather schools when their recruiters went out. Southern California, Texas, Alabama, North Carolina, and so they said, oh, well, that's easy, we're only going to recruit from northern-tier schools from now on. And they started that about four years ago, and the rate of revetism has dropped down to three percent. They said they get a better, I mean, somebody that understands the weather, that has a Midwestern work ethic, and they said, it's been an incredible coup for them in relationship to getting good people and maintaining them. So we said, if that works for Microsoft, why won't it work for other businesses within this? So we've been sharing this story a lot, and now, if you go out and you talk to some of the newer companies that have really kind of taken off, Apario, which is the spinoff from John Deere, they're doing the same thing. They only will attract, they only interview somebody if they, somewhere in their resume, they have a tie to North, South Dakota, Minnesota, Wyoming, maybe even narrow it down even further, according to what Barry and David Batchelor told us. And they're winning with that philosophy. They're not going to Austin, Texas, and trying to attract people. So we're better to try to start that process of net ads, or from alumni. So we're working with the alumni groups in all the major schools and colleges, and they've provided us with access to alumni records, they've asked us to come on tours with them. You know, it's in their best interest, too, because what they've found over the years is that alumni that live within a fifty-mile radius contribute more than people that live outside, you know, a greater distance away, because there's a stronger connection.
Does that, that helps significantly with the turnover rate, too, then?
Yeah.
That's a big deal, this business, yeah.
Brings people in, so, you know, in that initiative thing that we talked, that we provided you, there's, and I'm not going to go through it all, but there's a lot of new programs and initiatives in the workforce area that we've really focused on, and we're continuing to grow, and some people say, well, why are you involved in education? We're very involved even with K through 12 education, because it's a feeder system. And if it's being fed up, but, not fed up, if it's moving upward, if you will, then what happens is, is that if people are coming out of not only the high schools, but the colleges, and the curriculum's wrong, or if they're not being taught what business needs, then there's a gap there. So we need to try to fill those gaps, all the way down from, you know, strengthening vocational training, to our two-year community colleges, because not everybody needs a four-year education. I mean, we are pounding that into our school counselors' heads, we've now invited the school counselors in the area to MINDAC meetings every month, so they can understand what's going on and the technology that's in these manufacturing plants now. And it's a great opportunity, and partnering with NDSCS and M State, where these people can go through welding classes and other classes, they're one- and two-year programs, and their starting salaries are fifty-eight, sixty thousand dollars, and no debt. Trail King will pay four thousand dollars a year toward somebody's education, if you want to go to welding school for two years, they'll pay eight thousand of your education as long as you commit to them for two years. But they have to make that kind of investment. So we're seeing a lot of our manufacturers now starting to do that. So what we're working with, with NDSCS, is taking the campus on Nineteenth in Fargo, and with M State, to try to broaden the horizons within this marketplace, because people that want to be retrained can't go to Wappin', they can come here to M State, but they can't go to Wappin', they're working, it's too far away. So we're getting commitments to expand the Nineteenth Avenue NDSCS location for specific areas that we need here in this market, especially in robotics, in welding, and also, you know, kind of advanced CNC operations training. So that's a key component of that second leg, if you will, to what we're doing. The third leg is really focused on entrepreneurial development. You know, I looked around this community when I got here, when Mark and I both came here in the same time, March of 2012, and one of the things that I saw was, this really is an incredible entrepreneurial community. If you look around the businesses here that have been started locally, and have grown, and have just turned out to be incredible entities, there is a spirit of that here, and I think part of that has to do with the agricultural, you know, mindset to a large degree. But we seem to not have been supporting that as strongly as I think we should have. So we've been working a lot in the last year in helping that infrastructure on both sides of the river, moving that process forward. So entrepreneurial development and helping to support that, that community is an important fact of what we're doing. So, excuse me, those are the three legs of kind of what we're focused on, that will continue into 2014. From a personal standpoint, the EDC, we only have, other than yourself and Cass County, our private investors, we only have ninety, actually ninety-five investors in the EDC. So the board has challenged us to reach out, to strengthen the business community, and get more investment from the business community to support our programs and efforts, and so we'll be seeing a big push in that in 2014, from our standpoint, and hopefully broadening our awareness and moving that process and the business community forward. So if there's any questions...
I wanted to make comment, you were talking earlier about how you were targeting your... I want to get something to drink there.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
When you were targeting or talking about, not only with the college age, but getting into the high school and all ages of education, and it's kind of like the championship football team and how they get there. They start by going out and getting those young kids to start understanding the program that they're going to be moving up in. I remember that as a kid myself, growing up, that it was the high school coaches that had us as grade-school kids, already learning what was going to be expected as we move forward. And that goes into education for other purposes as well, and it's a good, it's a darn-good theory, I think, to have to use, so. And it ultimately brings certain places, like three national championships in a row, and stuff like that.
Not that I'm...
I'm just saying.
But, you know, we went to the three larger superintendents and asked them if they would work with us on trying to devise ways to, you know, increase the awareness of not only high-end and four-year opportunities, but two-year opportunities. And I didn't know how that was going to be responded to, but all three of the superintendents were like, yeah, when do you want to meet? And they've met, we've organized a group, we've brought in the United Way as part of that group, and it really has, it's morphing into something that what they have to, their three focuses are students, and trying to let them know. But more importantly, how do we educate parents and that process? And then how do we re-educate teachers to, what we call, get away from the stand-and-deliver method to a more, nobody likes the word STEM, so I'm not going to use the word STEM, but a more involved, you know, curriculum, that, you know, it's a project-learning-based versus a stand-and-deliver-based education system. So, but we appreciate the opportunity, I think we're moving forward, and be happy to answer your questions.
Well, we, I just learned we do have a couple more minutes, because our next, so it's going to allow me to ask you one more question, and I hope it's, I hope I don't catch you off-guard, but we all know about Western North Dakota, and how successful things are going out there, and how is that impacting the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development? And how are we looking at ways where, with the boom that's going on out there, there would be advantages for us here? Are you looking at that at all?
Absolutely. In 2013, we are doing a big project with Grand Forks, the Valley Prosperity Partnership Research Study. And by talking to them, they're very involved in the Bakken, they've been very, you know, their organizations there have gone to the Bakken, they've reached out, they've done a lot more. So we thought, boy, we're behind here, and we need to, you know, get up and get moving. So the first thing we needed to do is try to find out from our, you know, the primary-sector businesses, how many people were there, how interested they were in kind of pulling information and process together. And we did two surveys, and the responses were very, very minimal about who was doing work there, and from a manufacturing standpoint, where we found, then working with the chamber, that they did the same type of survey after we talked to them, and they had a much higher thing. So our real estate developers are there, our banks are there, our attorneys are there, our engineers and architects from here are all there. So a lot of that is services. Now, there are certain people like O'Day Construction, and, or, tanks, but that have connections and that are manufacturing product-wise, but it really is more in the service areas that we have found the biggest connections. So we did not move forward with any kind of initiative on that, because we just didn't see the process. Now, one that we did push forward was more on getting more involved with the immigration issues, and trying to help support that, because a lot of our manufacturers, a lot of our technical businesses are really crying out for that kind of help, that they need, you know, some changes in the immigration laws to help support, you know, again, that workforce issue. So.
Good. Mark? Thanks for being here. I wanted to comment, you didn't make it in time for our hearing this morning, but wanted to publicly thank you for your involvement with our subcommittee meeting on that. And we did have the hearing today, we did not decide on the final request yet, we wanted to have Commissioner Everett and commissioning yourself here before we do that, so we'll be doing that next week.
Okay.
Wanted you to know that, based on the three of us that are here today, we gave them positive feedback, and we certainly believe something will come their way, so.
Great.
Wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, and I apologize for my tardiness. I left Kindred at 8:10 this morning. I knew I wasn't going to get here in time for the 8:30 meeting, but I certainly thought I was going to get here in time for this one. It was at a standstill on 94 for some reason, but that's not your issue. But no, thank you, and it's been a great opportunity to be engaged with the Clay County EDA, and helping companies like Alderaan through those processes, and that's...
Well, you guys have the, you guys have the background in this, you've been doing it for a while, so we're going to, as these things happen in Clay County, we're going to be leaning on you guys to, for that assistance, so.
Absolutely.
you guys for that assistance. So it's kind of that good partnership we have. Grant?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank both Jim and Mark for everything they're doing with the Greater Fargo Market EDC. It's, there are so many positive things going on with that organization. And since you guys have taken over the leadership, honestly, the EDC has been much more attentive to what's going on in Clay County. And for that, I thank you and we appreciate that.
The focus is important to us. You know, it's funny, Mark and I, we don't know what the river is. I mean, we don't have any history. So we don't, it's kind of like, we don't care what side it is. It's all part of the process.
We just know once in a while we have to tame it.
I do want to say, you know, I wasn't, you know, when I first hear about economic development, I'm always thinking about new jobs, new businesses coming in here. And I mean, I'm just, you know, appreciate you coming in and telling me all what you're doing. You know, when I look over your presentation here that you gave us, I mean, I'm just impressed at what you've done. You know, it's just, it's very good, you know. And I guess I always thought, like I say, it was for new businesses, you know. But look at all the other stuff that you've helped out the existing companies, you know. And when you're talking about the M State and the company in Nineteenth Avenue there, Friday had an opportunity to go through M State. And it is just amazing what that college, you know, those, I mean, I know in the one place, they had forty-four kids involved in the program. They all got jobs already. I mean, they're not done with the program yet, but they got a hundred percent placement, you know. And it's, yeah, we do need a workforce.
It probably is the single biggest issue our community is going to face in the next five years. If we're going to maintain and sustain, forget about growing even, which is going to happen, but we have to do some things and make sure we're producing a good quality product. I hate to say this, but President Shemansky from M State says that, you know, we have to look at ourselves as educators as producing a product that people want. And if we don't, then shame on us. And I think that is a great thing coming from an academic environment.
Solving our long-term employment issues is almost easier than solving the short-term issues that we're facing right now, just because of all the things and programs that Jim alluded to, K-12 and, you know, the high school numbers. And those numbers are much larger in future classes than they are right now. So we've got the two-pronged challenge that, those are good problems to have. And we welcome them with open arms. We get pretty excited and pretty passionate about that.
Well, I have to tell you, when I get an opportunity to go to the, to those quarterly meetings, the morning meetings of the EDC, I, it's really encouraging to see that combination of public-private partnership. And you can, sometimes you can see the excitement of what's going on. And, you know, from the government standpoint, we probably don't bring quite as much to the table, but the knowledgeable ones are the people who are there and in those businesses. But our role, I think, is certainly to help in any way we can to put the word out on how good it is around here to be here.
One thing I do want to mention about 2014, and it's about, you know, working with, in a collaborative aspect on workforce specifically, we've partnered now with the Chamber, with the United Way, and with the FM Area Foundation. And we're going to be working this process forward about doing a major workforce study for this region in 2014. So we clearly understand what the, where the gaps are and where the process is. But the only way that can really happen is if we collaborate with other organizations and push this process forward. Because everybody sees the same issue. So from a different light, United Way is like, if we have more people working at high-paying jobs, there'll be less social services requirement. You know, FM Area Foundation, you know, wants to strengthen the focus. And of course, us and the Chamber wants, you know, from a business perspective, we're responding to the needs of our public. So, but thank you.
Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
It was nice to hear from you. Come back again.
Thanks.
Okay. We're going to just take like a four-minute break here real quick. We're going to be in our meeting here, and we'll move on to our nine-twenty item at nine-thirty. Dave, you have three things for us this morning.
Yeah, the first one is our annual bridge prioritization replacement list. Everything on this list has to be approved by the board before we get any type of funding, whether it be town bridge funds or bridge bonding or possibly even federal aid. But our main sources for bridge replacements are the bridge bond program for county and county state aid bridges, and then township bridge funds for the township structures. So what we do is we replaced all the ones that we did last year. I think there was maybe five or six box culverts, small wooden bridges replaced with the box culvert. And then we got the one township bridge just south of Saban that we're currently working on. And then we added a couple of projects for 2018. A few of them did move around. Typically, what we find is they kind of moved down the list a little bit. Not very often we have one such that moves way, you know, up on the list or needs to be replaced sooner, although that does happen periodically. But it didn't in this case. So I guess, I had planned on trying to bring a little bit of a map so you guys can kind of see where they're all at. But with, I was out of town all week on our county conference, and then I got stuck in Minneapolis last weekend or on Monday with the weather yesterday. So hopefully next year, I'll try to bring this resolution list with a map too, so you can kind of see exactly where they're at.
Right. So you need a, it's, do we have, is it just one resolution?
No, there's two here.
One for the township, one for county bridges?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Make a motion to approve that, for the resolution for the county bridges.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us saying, motion carried. And then we have one for the township bridges.
Also make a motion to accept the resolution for the township bridge priority list.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion carried. Okay, Agenda Two, Willage Tax Policy and Application.
Yeah, we were working on this over the last probably three months or so with our Highway Tracking Committee, developing some criteria to put together as far as a willage tax funding policy, and then an application form for the cities as they have projects they'd like to use their share of their, of the new willage tax fund on. I think we put together some pretty decent criteria that is pretty self-explanatory and seems pretty fair, mostly based on population for the smaller cities within Clay County. So we ended up with three categories based on population. Over fifteen thousand would be City of Moorhead. Between fifteen thousand and one thousand would be Barnesville, Dilworth, Glendon and Holly. And then under a thousand would be six more would be Comptalk, Felton, Georgetown, hit it all Saban at Eulyn. So that's kind of how we put it together. Trying to think of the exact dollar amounts that we kind of put together on those. We didn't really list it here, but we did put percentages of it. So population under a thousand is about three and a half percent of the thirty percent. The thirty percent equals about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. The seven percent would be eligible for all the cities between a thousand and fifteen, and then fifty-one percent of the total pot of money for the City of Moorhead. We also put together the application form. It's kind of similar to how counties need to put them together when we request federal aid through the ETPs. Basically, it's just some general information on what your project is, where it's at, and how much it costs, the year, and the contact information.
So according to this here, I mean, one city could use the whole thing up.
No, no.
I mean, if you look at, let's just take the second category, Barnesville, Dilworth, Glendon, Holly. They get seven percent of the funds.
Yep.
I mean, Barnesville has a project.
They share.
No.
They get equal, they get equal amounts. They get the same amount each year.
Okay. Okay. I was just wondering whether Barnesville put in for seven percent of the funds, whether they would get all the funds if they had an important project.
It's, the way it's basically gross is that each of them would get equal shares of that seven percent.
Seven percent. Okay, very good.
And they would have, you know, if they want to, they can let that money sit and grow until it can get significant enough to do a particular project. All this, of course, keep in mind, is for the purpose of improving our roads.
Correct.
And that's the sole purpose of why we're doing it.
Criteria number three there kind of describes what Kevin had mentioned there. Each individual city has a little sub-allocation that the tracking committee thought they could continue to let grow for a period of seven years. If they want to let it grow a little bit beyond that for a certain-sized project, they just got to request, request to the Highway Tracking Committee to do so. We thought we'd like to see them spend that money in a certain amount of time. I realize some of the smaller cities don't have a large amount of money, but we think it should be enough to help out on some of the things they're doing.
Okay. So are you looking for this approval of this policy today?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to.
Have you reviewed this? Do you see any?
I did. I did review it before this morning. And I don't see, I wasn't, I wasn't in on it, you know, the drafting of it or anything like that. And I guess I don't have a complete understanding of how it's supposed to work, but...
Maybe what I would suggest then is that the approval would be contingent upon the attorney's office
Sure.
accepting the language.
Maybe Dave and I can just talk about, more specifics about how it will operate.
Absolutely.
I'll move to approve with that stipulation. Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us saying, motion carried. And then on the back here, Dave, you have the application form. And I, I don't know if that's more of a managerial deal or if you need us to approve this as well.
I think, you know, you're correct. Probably the policy part, I just wanted to kind of show this is how we're going to get requests from the cities as they need funds.
Okay. So this part doesn't require?
Correct.
Is it, Brian, you agree with that?
I agree.
Okay, very good. Okay, Dave, so we'll move on to the truck size and weight legislation.
Yeah, this is something that's kind of a growing movement in Minnesota. There's been some talk about legislation increasing truck sizes and weights. Right now, the legal load size is five-axle, eighty thousand pounds on five axles. There is a kind of a farm permit, you know, kind of assorted with sugar beets and corn and potatoes of going to six-axle ninety thousand pounds, seven-axle ninety-seven thousand pounds. And some of the hauling companies are trying to push that to be the new legal limits. And the cities are kind of saying, well, we'd like to oppose that. We think we need to protect our roads. We're already deficient in funding to maintain them, let alone, you know, expand our systems. The County Engineers Association also supports holding back on new legislation of increasing weights, largely due to there's a federal study that's underway and it's not quite complete yet. And I think it'd be good to at least wait to see what that federal study does say. So we were requested to take a look at the, there's a letter here, it's dated January fifteenth in your packet. If that's something that we do support, I would get ahold of the group that's putting names on there, and we'd add our name to the list, basically supporting, holding off on any increases of truck sizes and weights.
Didn't we increase the size of trucks about four or five months ago?
There's a case-by-case, you know, permit-by-permit basis. You can't apply for a six- or seven-axle permit under some certain criteria. And we have, we do allow that in Clay County. We do sell that permit. The state also sells that permit. But I think the underlying thing is we'd like to keep the actual gross, the legal gross weight of eighty thousand pounds.
Are you requesting action?
Yeah, I guess, I think we should add our name to the list. Basically, there's not enough information out there from that federal study. And it might be a little premature to just jump ahead and start adding additional weights for everyone on the road.
Does AMC take the formal position?
I believe so. That's what I've been told. AMC and the...
Supports what you're requesting?
Correct. Yep.
All right. I'll move. Move on to, okay, and then second to support the request for, the request from the engineer on that issue. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us saying, motion carried. Thank you, Dave.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this point, I know we've got quite a few here. And Bruce, I'm going to just put you on hold for just a minute, if that's okay. You're no less important, but I've got people that have other...
I don't.
You're more important. That's why I need you to stay and listen. Rhonda?
Good morning. Let's be clear, it's you.
It's okay, Kathy is mad at us too.
We have our chief attorney here, and I would imagine he has places he needs to get to. So you have...
Thanks for having us.
So we have a couple of agenda amendments that you, additions that you had asked for, Rhonda. So I'm going to let you just take over.
Okay, yes. And I apologize for adding these at late notice. But this is a grant application that we're looking for approval to submit. It is due next week, Monday. So we are kind of furiously trying to get that application submitted. This grant proposal, it's coming out of the Minnesota Department of Health. It's called Safe Harbor, No Wrong Door Regional Navigator Grant Proposal. And it's designed to look at and impact the sexual exploitation of youth. And so it actually, I think, was brought more to the attention to Brian's office. And he kind of spearheaded getting some stakeholders together to look at this grant. So it would involve hiring a part-time person. We'd be looking at a social work position that would serve our three-county region is what the proposal would be, Becker, Clay, and Ottertail. We probably would be hoping to work with some youth that end up in the Fargo area as well. But we would be looking for social services to be the fiscal host with hiring the employee and then working...
With Clay County?
Yeah, with Clay County. And then working with all of our community stakeholders on kind of the broader pieces of the grant.
And so that grant would help, would cover the cost of that.
Correct. We would be asking for the maximum amount that we could, which would be sixty-two thousand, five hundred for a two-year period. So it'd be a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We may not get that, but that's what we would start with. And we'd be looking at either a point-five or a point-six FTE. We need to, our committee is actually meeting today and is going to vet out a few more of those details. But that's what we would be hoping for.
I think, just to give you a little bit more background, John Choi, who's the Ramsey County Attorney, has really spearheaded a large portion of this. St. Paul has a really difficult issue with exploited, sexually exploited children, sexually exploited women, a lot of prostitution down there. They have put a lot of effort, went and got grants to really start to tackle this problem, are working with other regional county attorneys in there to really try to address it in a different manner and say, hey, instead of going after, you know, the exploited woman, or a lot of times juvenile, and as what they were talking about, the average age is, they're getting involved, a lot of times a prostitution is fifteen years old, fifteen years of age, and as young as twelve and thirteen. And they're pulled into this by, you know, as a runaway or a boyfriend situation that then they just drag them into and continue to exploit them. And he had some pretty sobering statistics that he brought to me, where the average life expectancy a lot of times is five to seven years where they, you know, come into violence or come into disease that ends up killing them. A lot of different issues that are really out there. And so when I looked at this and we started talking about it, I was willing to put some forfeiture funds towards trying to get the grant put together on a really short notice basis. But on a couple of issues, we don't have office space. I also think as a regional coordinator, which is what they're trying to put together, I think it fits better with Rhonda to help administer that and have that person be out there providing training, that type of thing. But I think, and right now, we're getting letters of agreement or working with Ottertail and Becker that they'll help work between their counties, their county attorneys that are aware of kind of this whole process, law enforcement as well. But I think it's a training issue. It's a, it is a law enforcement issue and how we address it and kind of look at it maybe from a different angle. And then also working to get those exploited children, you know, identified, help them, I guess, address issues is really one of the biggest issues. When they're homeless, they don't have money. A lot of times, they don't have their identification with them. They don't have a place to go. There's a lot of things that I think that we can do with this. And that part-time position is a good start. And then working between our offices, Social Services, the Child Advocacy Center, which is another partner in this. And so we think this is a good thing. It's definitely short notice. And so I think we can put it together if we can get your approval. your approval.
Very good.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve submission of the grant application.
Second. You have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
I would, I would just add the one thing that we were thinking of putting in the grant as in-kind would be, we do have an office space that would be available, so we thought we would consider that in-kind to the grant. The other thing is the grant, there's no match to the grant, but they do allow up to ten percent to be used for administering the funds. So that would be six thousand two hundred dollars. We could leave that out of the grant application if that's another piece the county would want to consider in-kind, or we could, you know, put that in if you have a, an opinion about that.
Well, my opinion is put it to the best use.
Okay. All right. So we'll work through that this afternoon.
That's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We didn't vote?
Oh, we didn't vote. Okay. Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried. Very good. Thank you. Ryan? Thank you, Rhonda. Rhonda, you have one more, don't you?
Okay, I do. I, thank you, Brian. I have a resignation, a social worker in my disability services unit, actually is a person that's going to be going in, working at the Red River Advocacy Center. So she'll still be working with us, but just in a different capacity. So I wanted to seek permission right away to post that and move forward with filling her position. This is a position that does generate revenue and I, I didn't have it in the information I sent to you yesterday, but I did get from the auditor's office, her last quarter's revenue based on her activity and it was close to twenty-five thousand. So it is a position that over time does pretty much pay for itself in terms of the case management.
So you're looking at somebody within for this?
Um, we'll post it internally so we can allow the social workers to change caseloads, but ultimately we'll be hiring a social worker wherever that position lands.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Motion in the second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Bruce Jaster. Tim, are you hanging around, hanging around with Bruce?
We're arguing.
Okay. Are you anticipating an argument here? Okay. Well, Tim, you have a request here, if I get my stuff together here, to purchase a vehicle for the, for the Environmental Health Department, which you tell us a little bit about. I know we've got the document here from you.
Yep. I guess it started with a conversation between Commissioner Berg and Tim and I, and we were talking about the vehicles. We do have that two thousand and two, just starting to show some rust signs, mileage is below normal. And then we have the two thousand and seven. I do have an internal service account that the budget dollars every year for vehicle replacement. And I guess seeing how's that, how that two thousand and two still has some value to it, I thought it'd be a good time to upgrade to a different, different vehicle.
So is the, is the, is the thirty-eight seven the total internal service value of the two vehicles?
That's just that account.
Okay. So it's one account for...
It's one account.
So you have one account that covers both vehicles?
Right. Right.
Because typically, I know in a lot of the internal, each, each particular fleet vehicle has its own value.
No, I've just, we've always just kind of kept it as just one, one account and one vehicle. And with the two of us, we just kind of keep shuffling around. Talking to the auditor this morning, she kind of, for her bookkeeping purposes, depreciate the vehicles out five year, five years plus one. So if that's any help. And I asked her about the fleet vehicles and I guess they're kind of a hundred thousand, hundred thousand miles...
Miles or above.
Or above, or how much it costs in the heat and running, so.
All right. I see the...
Excuse me. Mr. Berg had asked me to obtain another quote from a local vendor that wasn't on the state, state bid list. And I was really shocked at the price that one came in at, not being on the state contract.
So this is the, Brian, is this the one that's, was put on my...
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
It's the one from the, the Burns Ford, or Burns Ford.
Okay. How much was the difference in the local or without the state bid?
It's twenty-three hundred dollars less.
Yeah. If you're comparing apples and apples, like a V eight to a V eight versus, a V eight is standard in the Ford where the V six is standard in the GMC. Yeah, but like I said, I was very shocked at how comparable they were, not even being on the state, state contract bid list.
So, so when you look for a vehicle like this, do you kind of, do you kind of keep in mind all the, you know, there's all these different features that they may have and whether it's with the box and all that kind of stuff? And do you kind of look, look for things that are necessary for, because you're hauling around stuff in these boxes too, right?
Right.
You know, and so, so you must have, have to have certain types of equipment attachments to, to pick up?
Well, what I carry in the back is, I can carry a six-foot step ladder, I carry a, it's a five and a half or six-foot bucket auger. I have another auger I use. I have some measuring sticks used out in the field.
Do you keep all that loose in there or do you have...
No, we have a fiberglass topper that we lock.
Okay.
And keep it there.
Okay. So it comes with the fiberglass?
No, that, that is separate.
Okay.
I haven't got it. The original quote from GM, they were like, it's fourteen or fifteen hundred, direct from the factory. And I haven't got an exact quote yet from a local vendor.
So there would be an additional cost.
Right.
And it's a crew, a four-door?
No. Well, one is a, they don't have, the GM doesn't, the new model doesn't come with an extended cab. It's called a double door unit, or you can bump up to a crew cab, but the crew cab is only a five and a half foot box or six foot. Or on the Ford, it's, they do have the extended cab and that, that has the six and a half foot box and you need to carry that stuff. Brian, you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I do, Mr. Chair. And Bruce and I visited about this yesterday as well. We visited with Tim last week. The Dodge isn't in here and the Dodge does come with a state bid as well, I understand, correct?
Right.
And I guess I just feel that I'd like a little more time, if you would want to give us a little more time to visit, a little more with Bruce about these, as to the, what the needs are. I mean, I, I think this is, this package has got the auto start and different things with it, correct? Is what I learned yesterday.
I know I didn't request that.
And I just like to, and that's the thing, I don't think we know all of the extras that are on the vehicle because the package comes pretty, that's a thirty-eight hundred dollar package that the GMC was on Ford is much more conservative with two thousand dollars. But again, we want to make sure we're giving everybody a fair opportunity. So it would really, I, I would like to have a little more time to, so that we're reasonably consistent. I know what Bruce did is he took the, or at least I believe he took the information from what Highway requested last year.
Right.
And, but you know, Highway does a lot of different functions with it. They pull trailers and things and they put on a lot more miles and rough miles. So if, if you wouldn't mind, if Bruce would allow a little extra time in discussing this so we're just comfortable before we come and approve it.
Is there any reason we can't wait, Bruce?
No.
I mean, nothing critical going on?
No, no. It was, I had just talked to Georgia and we were talking about her vehicle replacements for the fleet. And she says that this is the time of year that there's kind of a timeframe to get them in.
State bids you've only got, state bids you've only got, they've got to be ordered by a certain date, right?
Yeah.
To get taken...
That's correct.
And then you're, the, the one that we would get rid of, that would, would that go to the auction then or how?
Uh, we had talked that maintenance is in need of a replacement vehicle.
One that we talked about was, I don't know if you've seen the maintenance, I can't remember if it's a Bronco or whatever it is, it's the...
Yes, I've seen it.
We'd like to get rid of that one.
That, that'd be a replacement vehicle, it's two thousand and two.
I think that thing could just fall apart.
I think it already has.
I'm amazed that it's held together, but what they like about that is it's a piece.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, Bruce, if that's okay, we'll, we'll hold this over and we'll have it on the agenda next week.
Okay.
Right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our, our time with Nancy Gunderson has been postponed, so Kathy McKay, you are next up.
Good morning. We are here to request a vacated position in detox. And the change in regards to that position is it was a technician that left and we'd like to replace it with an LPN. It's a point eight position and so we continue with that point eight LPN. And the rationale for that, as I listed, is we are certainly in, in need of another licensed nurse. Our one LPN that we have on as regular staff is probably near the end of her career, so that we'd be without an LPN at all. And with the numbers of clients that we're now receiving from the North Dakota side, I think it warrants having another licensed nurse. Janelle and Dawn are the two RNs that are on call typically. And if we have an LPN, then we have less of a need for them to take a lot of that call. I'm just handing out, there's some statistics just so you can see how many, how many numbers we're getting from the North Dakota side. If you look at the bottom of that list in 2013, we did have a hundred and seventeen clients from the North, North Dakota side and that's through Southeast. And it's a, we, we worked that out very well with contract with them and there is funding that follows those clients.
So when you, when you say this, so in this, we're dealing in the detox area, you know, and so when you say that North Dakota, people are coming over here, it's because we agreed to do that, right?
Yeah, this is the contract with that interstate agreement.
Right. So people think that, you know, I...
Yes, for the, for the public, this is an agreement that was set up with Southeast for those clients that are in need of a medical detox, that really don't need a hospital level of care and the, and the detox on the Fargo side is not a medical model. So these are clients that, that we can meet the need.
And we've agreed through a process to take them.
Correct. And those are voluntary clients.
Right.
And so we have a contract that we're working with those alone. So we have a hundred and seventeen clients and, and then of course the revenue follows those.
When did that exactly start again in thirteen?
That was in June.
So it's basically for a half a year this time?
So it's for half a year. And we've already received about seventy-one thousand in revenue just for half a year in 2013. And that's a hundred and seventeen clients for half a year. So we anticipate that, you know, that we will, Southeast is very confident that because this is working well for them and it's working well for us on our end, that we'll continue this. Our average census per day, as you see at the bottom, is, is low, but with the increase in North Dakota clients, actually that last half a year, it's about six point six nine is our average census. So we're still below our ten-bed potential. So what we'd like to do is then fill that LPN position in point eight. And of course with the increased revenue, we have substantial enough funding to cover the difference in the technician and the LPN, which is about four thousand in salary difference and then it would be the benefits as well.
But you can fit that in your budget.
We can fit that in our budget.
Through revenue.
Correct. Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second. You have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I was just wondering, now this point eight, do they, they get the full benefits and...
They get the prorated. It's thirty-two hours a week.
Thirty-two, okay.
So they get the prorated benefits at thirty-two hours a week.
All right. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is a resolution requesting the 2014 legislature specifically to name the Oakport flood mitigation in any 2014 capital improvement bonding bill. Mr. Berg, why don't you...
I think, I just happen to think this is a wonderful idea.
Well, it's your guys' idea.
Any further discussion?
That's what I was going to say.
Oh, wait, I mean, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I really don't need to appear, because this is your guys' idea. But, okay, I'll just say that this is something that the county board wanted to show their support for Morehead furthering their flood protection and also Oakport, Oakport's project of protecting its township. And they are both requesting funds. And we did get some clarification on Friday that the bonding bill, that's almost a billion dollars, does not reflect any request for flood mitigation in this immediate area or any place else in the state. They felt they addressed that quite a bit last year and then with the special session, there'll still be requests, so going in. So I think this is very valid that the county show its support to Morehead and Oakport Township in finishing their flood projects. And this is to finish their project, their flood project. So we've contacted both the city and the, the...
Buffalo.
Buffalo, Bruce. Bruce weighed in on his changes and there are, there's a few little changes to it. Their request is quite a bit less than it was in the past. I think it went from fourteen million something to seven million.
For Morehead?
For Morehead, yes.
And Oakport's at like five point two or...
It was just very little. It was, it was down just slightly from five point two six, I believe, for Oakport. So, yeah.
And that would, that would, that would finish Oakport.
Yes.
You know, as we heard from Bruce Albright here a couple of weeks ago, the, the one portion of that project is now certified, the libraries are certified and it would really be great to finish this off so that the rest of those residents could see their areas certified as well. Yeah, okay. So, go ahead.
No, nothing else on that.
Okay. So we have a proposed draft to support those projects.
So moved.
Motion, second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, if I just may, when Commissioner Gross asked about the prorated benefits on that, when she said prorated, she means that if they're employed, point eight percent of the time, they get point eight percent of the, of the benefits as well. In other words, same with their vacation, sick leave and also the, the hospitalization. They don't get the hundred percent, they get a point rate, the same rate that they work at. So if that helps clarify.
Yeah, well, I was just wondering why we went with point eight, you know, they get all the benefits and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, they don't.
Why didn't we just go forty hours a week?
Right.
Okay.
And, and also I just wanted to mention, Mr. Chair, when they were talking about that detox and, and just a little over six months of seventy-one thousand dollars revenue, that was something that Commissioner Whelan said back long ago that wanted to expand the service on that and try to, to spread the, the pain a little bit because that does cost the county between five and six hundred thousand dollars a year. So if we can gather a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars of revenue a year and not increase our costs much, as you witnessed, that's really a help to the citizens of Clay County. So I think Mr. Whelan really needs to be complimented on his initiative to get that going. going. So it's been real positive. So, thank you.
Excellent, very good. All right. Okay, we'll move into committee reports. Grant, do you have any reports to give today?
Let's see. Yeah, I had, we had a Heartland Trail meeting in Holly last week, and we had our legislative representative there, and I think things are still pretty positive. We're looking at, between us and Becker County, getting some bonding money, and our share would be to actually get the route laid out and planned and get some, so we're shovel-ready when we can get additional funds for that. And they're still pretty, I think, pretty positive about that. MetroCog was there, and they're going to start working on the Heartland Trail project with us in the near future, and they were pretty positive about if we get some bonding money for our section of the trail, that they can also leverage some federal money to work on that project also. So I thought it was pretty positive. Frank was there also, so. And let's see, I attended a MetroCog meeting, and Frank did an outstanding job. It was his first meeting as the chair. The weather's been working against him to actually get a meeting going, so. And then I went to the Intergovernmental Retreat on Friday, and that was a lot of interesting information provided. And late afternoon, we had the legislative group there, and so that was, you know, they gave us an update on what's going on and what we can anticipate. So that was it for me.
Okay. Frank?
I guess three of the meetings that Grant went to, I went to too, that Heartland Trail, we're just asking legislative support. Also, last night at the meeting, I went to Art's Agacy Recreation Trails. I mean, they're even looking at extending that trail from Yulin on probably meeting this Heartland Trail. I mean, that's in the future somewhere, you know, but it's, could be working there. And the FMCOG there, her weight line pretty much went over annual report, all the processes that are going and coming up. Family Healthcare Thursday, there we pretty much went over the development, they're looking at a campaign to try and get some contributions to help fund the family healthcare. They've got about a million and a half that they're trying to raise, so. Worked on that. Friday, Intergovernmental Retreat, I think that was a great, it's just a great reports by school districts that were represented there, and legislative session was good, and it was a good meeting. Last night, at the Agacy Recreation Trails, again, they're looking at, they have to make a decision which way they want to go. I mean, they're looking at their funding, and it's getting very limited, you know, and they got a, they plan to talk to the DNR, you know, whether the DNR wants to take over the trail, and if they don't, do the counties, do the three counties that are involved, do we, if we want to keep that trail going, do the counties want to take over that trail? If not, they may be in some problems, or asking for more funds or whatever, but they're running into some problems as far as the funding. Those are the meetings I have.
Okay, all right. Well, I just had two meetings last week, other than the pick meeting, which I reported on, but we have, had the business subsidy meeting, which resulted in the meeting today and the public hearing with Aldrin. So that, we'll finish that up next week. And then there was also a special meeting of the diversion authority to, we got, they got word that the Minnesota DNR, the EIS scope is complete, then they came up with the dollar amount that they'd need to complete that study. And originally, the diversion authority had set aside $750,000 to pay for that study, and it was learned that those dollar amounts have gone up to 1.2 million. So the diversion authority meant to discuss, and they felt that with, within the $70 million budget that they're working with this year, that they would have the appropriate funds to fund the DNR to get that, that EIS done, so. So it was voted on and approved by the diversion authority to fund that on behalf of the Minnesota DNR. That's, and then, of course, I was able to attend portions of the Intergovernmental Retreat, and I certainly liked it. I really liked that presentation that the Assistant Fire Chief gave, and that was very well done. And overall, I think the attendance looked pretty good there. Might have been down a little bit, but hopefully everybody got something out of that retreat, so. Brian, we'll go to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I too attended the retreat, thought it was really well done again, and the networking, it just seemed like there wasn't even enough time on the breaks to get around and make contacts with all of the individuals. But, you know, it just was really, really well attended and good interaction amongst the attendees, I thought. So appreciate the opportunity to attend that. We did have a business subsidy meeting, which we did talk a little bit about the process as it moves forward for abatements and things, I thought was really a good exchange. The county did hold its second lean event, and we may give you more of a report on it. It just finished up yesterday, but Darren and Leslie, Leslie from Public Health were the facilitators on it, and it was something, I guess, that was sponsored through the administrator's office, because what it did, it involved, it was to look at splits and laying out the land divisions when there's a property split, and how many departments touch that piece of operation. And I think it's a good one to go over, because it deals with the recorder's office, the assessor's office, the auditor's office, the treasurer's office, the zoning office, and that piece of paper, or those plaques information, has to go to all of them. County Attorney's Office weighs in on it as well. And how do we flow that through the system and be efficient service to the customer? And it's got to be very, very accurate. Just some really, really good responses from the staff that did attend that. They really felt it helped, and it probably increased the processing time in half of this, and this is really, really good. I'm really excited about it. I think it really worked well. You'll hear more about it later. We had a pre-construction meeting on DMV last Tuesday afternoon, so the contract's been signed, and they should be staging out there this week, so get moving on it, which is a very positive thing. Did have a diversion meeting, that's already been addressed. The EIS additional monies were approved. Did do some work on setting up another goal setting or retreat or whatever you want to call it. Wondering if you folks still want to go ahead with that this year? I thought that was valuable last year. I think the department heads felt it's good to hear direction from the county commissioners, and I have a tentative time. I'd like to have Tony Smith come back. I thought she did a good job of facilitating last year. I think we need to look at what we've accomplished, maybe add a goal or two to it, if you'd like to go that direction, or kind of looking at Wednesday, April 2nd. Should I proceed with that, do you think? I think that works for me, Dave, why is it... Okay. Okay.
I would maybe send something out to John and Wayne and make sure that...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just did it this last week, and we'll certainly get something out to everybody and see if that will work out, so. Super. We'll do that. I did have an additional...
Should warm up by then, it'll be down in 2030 below. By April, hopefully.
If you want to squeeze it in before the flood, let's let the projections stay, but isn't that something, you got to plan your schedules around flood events in the spring of the year? Hopefully someday we won't have to do that, all right?
Great.
So we had an update in regards to the DC trip, and Moorhead plans to participate in that with their new mayor and the city manager, so Clay County won't be going, at least that's the plan, unless you folks feel differently. Had some personnel evaluations, MCIT liability coverage online, the Intergovernmental Retreat, really already talked about that. Spent some time with the new solid waste manager. I think, I'm just really excited that we're going to really go in some positive directions there. We have, we're going to be, Commissioner Whelan and Commissioner Campbell and myself will be conducting a couple interviews and reference for quarters right after this today. And also, we have a meeting this afternoon at 5:30, out with some townships. Mr. Gross, you're aware of that, you plan to attend that? And you folks had inquired about the committees that are the various committees around the county and we get involved in, and I know Vicki has done a lot of work in regards to contacting most of those entities and what the fee is, who pays it, the mileage and all those kinds of things. We'll do a little summary on that very soon, I think, for you. I think she's pretty much complete on that, but has put in a lot of time on that, running down those answers. We, I think you're all aware that last Saturday night, that when XL had that explosion and fire up in the gas, or gas line up south of Winnipeg, Brian Green did contact me about midnight on Saturday night, and we did do some talking about preparations for that and what we would do. And we went to auxiliary power here on the campus using fuel oil, which is good that we have that backup system. And we also talked about shelter setups, and he'd been in contact in getting prepared for that, and fortunately, it went very, very smooth. But I think it's something we have to keep on our minds, that it's very important that we keep a disaster emergency coordinator, just having access to this information and facilities where we put people, if the gas goes out for two days in an apartment house, what do we do with those folks? And things along those lines. With that, Mr. Chair, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, you got anything for us today?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. Vicki, any last... Okay, all right.
Do we need to take some action on me switching?
Yeah, yeah. As we know, John was supposed to, we approved through a motion last week for John to work with me on this deal with the recorders, or interviews today, and because John wouldn't be here, I suggested that Grant, he had the time to fill in, so we should, you know, probably formally make that change. We have a motion.
Do that.
Yeah. Do you have a motion? Okay, there's a motion in the second. Okay. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same, motion carried. Okay, we are adjourned.